Can we have Chief Bay in the participant list until we pull him in? Yep, so we'll do Scott and then we'll do, we'll do you, John, if you're listening there.
Sounds good to me. Thanks. How's everybody?
I think we're doing well, John, but everybody else?
Very good, God. Thank God.
We'll wait just a couple more minutes and then I will kick us off, but hello to everybody who might be watching from elsewhere. I'm just making sure I have all the relevant documents pulled up. Amber, do you want to let Zavi in?
Hi, everyone.
He's here.
He's on.
Jamie, you look like you're in a box.
Funniest comment I heard was, it looks like I'm on the top of a bunk bed.
Oh, yeah, and you're hitting the ceiling.
Don't worry, I'm comfortable. It's okay.
All right, councilors, are we ready?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March 9th meeting of the Council of the City of Lancaster. Mr. Harris, would you please call the role of members?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royal.
Here.
Ms. Bacon.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Here. All right. Let's just put the agenda there. Let's go to the approval of the minutes for the February 23rd meeting of council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council comments. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
It's Mr. President. Mr. Royal.
Aye.
Ms. Bacon.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. All right, that brings us to Proclamations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition. This evening, per the printed agenda, we have, we have promotions from the Fire Department. And then after Chief Little is finished, we're going to have promotions from the Police Department, presented by interim chief John Bay. Ms. Strazo, would you please add Chief Scott Little to the meeting? Hey, Chief, good evening.
Good evening, council. Thank you to City Council and Mayor Sarachi for taking time this evening for us to recognize Captain Dusty Donald on his promotion to battalion chief. But first, I want to thank all of our staff who continue to be on the front line every day, keeping our city safe, but always going above and beyond for the small task that we always ask of them. We continue to concentrate on our key areas that increase operational efficiencies, training for our professional development, programs that connect our staff and engage our staff with our community members, while improving the health and safety of our firefighters and our long-range planning. I spoke recently about our Bureau's success stories. Over 10,500 hours of training in 2020, 14 members of our Bureau who have been promoted by Mayor Sarachi since she took office in 2018, and that list goes on and on. And tonight, we have another milestone. This will be the first time since 2012 that all four of our battalion chief ranks will be filled, and each platoon will have a chief officer as their direct supervisor. Tonight, I share with you Captain Dusty Donald, a 14-year member of the Bureau, who currently serves on the C platoon, where he oversees the day-to-day operations for 17 personnel that includes their workflow, scheduling, performance, mentorship, and guidance. Captain Donald holds a master's degree in public administration, a bachelor's in psychology, a 2018 graduate of Leadership Lancaster. He's a designated fire officer through the Center for Public Safety Excellence, all while currently attending the National Fire Academy's prestigious Executive Fire Officer Program. In addition, he's a certified fire officer for, fire inspector to, fire instructor to, incident safety officer, and he's also certified as a fire and explosive investigator. Bureau awards include Tactical Medic of the Year for years 2019 and 2013, Fire Officer of the Year in 2018, the Courage Award in 2011, and the Valor Award in 2010. The Bureau looks forward to the work that Captain Donald will do as our newest chief fire officer. Congratulations, Chief Donald.
Chief Little. Mayor Sarachi, and members of City Council, thank you very much for this opportunity. I look forward to getting started in my new position.
And I just want to add that it has been quite a long journey to get us to this place, and I appreciate the process that has been working to fill positions internally and to get us to this point in time. And congratulations to you, Captain Donald, on this promotion. I look forward to working with you in your new capacity.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you to both you and to the Fire Chief. We're seeing a lot of good stuff out of the, out of the Fire Department. And frankly, all this while your homes are being demolished and rebuilt, your rebuilds, your proverbial work homes. But so, thank you for your continued service and congratulations on your promotion. You still have the floor, Chief Little. Do you have anything else?
No, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Strazo, would you please add Chief Bay to the meeting?
Thank you, Captain.
Evening, Chief Bay.
Good evening. How are you, Mr. President?
I'm doing, I'm doing well.
Yeah, good evening, council. On behalf of the Police Department, Bureau of Police, and Mayor Sarachi, I bring four promotions tonight in our Bureau: one lieutenant and three sergeants. We're very honored to celebrate these promotions tonight. You know, these are four very well-deserving individuals who we know absolutely will bring integrity-driven leadership to our organization and to our community. Right now, they are out on the front lines working tonight, so they don't, they don't have an opportunity to present themselves tonight to the council. So tonight, I bring Lieutenant Chris McCormick, a 17-year veteran of Bureau of Police, currently serving as the officer in charge of A platoon. Prior to his promotion, Lieutenant McCormick served as the Bureau Training Sergeant. Lieutenant McCormick was hired and promoted to patrol officer in June of 2003 into sergeant in May of 2016. Lieutenant McCormick attended HAC as a Criminal Justice Major and the Reading Police Academy. He's currently certified as a use-of-force instructor, a de-escalation instructor, and a Gracie Survival Tactics instructor. His awards include Patrol Officer of the Year 2012, Life Saving Award 2017, Unit Citation in 2013, 14, and 17, Accommodation for Merit in 2017, Accommodation for Outstanding Enforcement in 2004, '07, '11, '15, and '16, the Kaufman Investigator of the Year in our special, I'm sorry, in our Selective Enforcement Unit in 2011, and Accommodation for Heroism in 2007. Next, we have Sergeant Matt Odenthal, a 15-year veteran of the Bureau of Police and currently serving as a patrol supervisor for the A platoon. Prior to his promotion, Sergeant Odenthal served as a detective and worked in both the Special Investigations and Violent Crime Units. His education is, he holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Marshall University and a master's degree in criminal justice also from Marshall University with a minor in sociology. Sergeant Odenthal holds certifications as a field training officer, a Reading Police Academy instructor, FNM Community Police Officer of the Year in 2010, bike patrol instructor, less-lethal munitions certification, and is a member of the Lancaster County Special, the SERC team, and actually One Operator of the Year in 2018. And currently, Sergeant Odenthal is also a polygraph examiner. His awards include Life Saving Award, Legion of Merit in 2018, Accommodation for Outstanding Enforcement in 2010, '12, and '14, a unit citation in 2007 and '13, and Accommodation for Merit in 2008. He also holds a departmental trophy team for the YWC Race Against Racism for multiple years. Next, we have Sergeant Ryan Work. Sergeant Work is a 14-year member of the Bureau of Police and currently serves as a supervisor for D platoon. Additionally, Sergeant Work serves as a field training officer, an armorer, and firearms instructor, and is tasked with maintaining weapons and training officers in the use of firearms. Sergeant Work is also assigned to the Lancaster County Special Emergency Response Team, or SERC team, where he serves as a squad leader and firearms instructor. His education includes training for first-line supervisors from POSIT, Bo-Mac Incident Command School, Basic SWAT Course, Advanced SWAT Course, and a Reading Police Academy instructor. He holds certifications as a Glock Armorer, a Patrol Rifle Armorer, a Remington Shotgun Armorer, and NRA Shotgun and Handgun Instructor. His awards include the Life Saving Award in 2011 and '19, Legion of Merit, Accommodation for Merit in 2015 and '18, a unit citation in 2010, '11, '13, and '15, and Outstanding Enforcement in 2011, twice in 2010. And lastly, certainly not least, I bring Sergeant Ben Bradley. Sergeant Bradley is a 13-year veteran of the Bureau of Police and currently serves as a patrol supervisor for A platoon. Sergeant Bradley continues to serve as a K-9 handler with his partner Woden, his K-9 partner. Sergeant Bradley is a member of our crash investigation team and is also certified as a bike instructor. He's also a member of Lancaster County SERC team. His education includes a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Westchester University, Cape May Police Academy, and the Reading Police Academy. Sergeant Bradley holds certifications as a DWI Detection and Standardized Field Supporting Testing Operator, Advanced Roadside Impair Driving Enforcement, Basic SWAT Operations Training, On-S scene Homicide by Vehicle Collision Investigations, Advanced and Technical Analysis Collision Investigation, Advanced SWAT, K-9 Patrol and Explosive Detection Certification, SWAT and K-9's Interacting During Deployment School, Simulation Training for Initial Response Personnel, Pennsylvania State Police Civil Disorder Training, yearly K-9 certifications through United Police and Corrections, K-9 Association, American Working Dog Association, and he also holds a awards and life-saving award in 2011. He was also awarded Outstanding Officer of the Year 2011 by the Lancaster County Chiefs of Police, Outstanding Act of Bravery in 2014 Lancaster County Chiefs of Police, Accommodations for Bravery twice in 2014, and lastly, the Life Saving Award in 2019. We're very excited to have these young men as our future leaders, current and future leaders of our department. We have high expectations for them. You know, they're, they're very well-versed in their craft as police officers. We're excited what they're bringing to the table in terms of integrity-driven leadership, and they understand that it's no longer about them, that it's about mentoring the people under them and paving the way for the direction that we're moving our police department in. We're very, very excited to have them at the helm. So congratulations to Lieutenant McCormick, Sergeant Bradley, Sergeant Work, and Sergeant Odenthal.
Thank you very much, Chief, and I know you mentioned that they cannot be here tonight because they're, they're on shift doing, doing their work. But congratulations to the named officers on their, on their promotions. I think you know as well as anybody that expectations at this time are, are high. You know, we, we expect, we expect the best. And so, you know, we trust your selection in that regard, and so, congratulations again to you all.
President, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Of course. Chief, the floor is still yours. What else you got?
That's it for now, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief, and have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Bye.
All right, that brings us to Council Resolution Number 10, 2021, recognizing Carl Pike. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. The Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, honoring the achievements of Carl S. Pike on the occasion of his 20-year service, 20 years of service on the Shade Tree Commission.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Pike. This is a personnel matter, so Counselor Diaz, technically, this is your show.
Well, since you already started, if Mr. Pike would like to address City Council.
Thank you very much, members of council. I'm humbled and deeply grateful for this recognition, and I'm glad to be able to give back to our city. What I've done over the years has only been possible because of the dedication and hard work of many people, too many to name individually. They've taught me so much. Growing up in New York City, the only tree I knew was the invasive tree of heaven. That's the tree grows in Brooklyn, but I grew up in Queens. Many of you know that that tree is the favorite of our nasty spider-lantern flies. So starting from that, I had an awful lot to learn. It was a steep learning curve. I'd like to acknowledge the following. First of all, my volunteer colleagues on the Shade Tree Commission. We build on the work that that commission has carried on since it was established by City Council, and Council established that in 1929, so we're looking forward to our 100th anniversary. Next, I'd like to acknowledge the city leadership and city staff in many departments, the Arborist Crew, the Stormwater Bureau, and many, many others in Public Works, the Community Planning and Economic Development Department, Communications and Neighborhood Engagement Staff, and many, many council members and mayors over the years. Next, I'd like to thank the staff and hundreds of volunteers of our partner organizations, including Lancaster Tree Tenders, Alliance from Chesapeake Bay, Lancaster City Alliance, the former organization Live Green, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and many neighborhood and community groups. A lot of funds for the city's tree programs have been provided by granting agencies, particularly the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation Natural Resources, other foundations, local groups, local churches have been key to what the city's been able to accomplish. And last, but by no means least, and in fact, most important, are Lancaster's residents and businesses who've been planting and caring for trees for more than a century. And I'll just conclude by saying that our commitment is to trees and to environmental justice in Lancaster City. Thank you very much, members of council, for this recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Carl, for your services. That's 20 years is a long time, and I know that you've done a lot in our community. I'm also passionate to trees and making sure that our, our city could turn into a forest where we can have some oxygen and everything would be very hunky-dory when it comes to breathing. So it does take a lot to, to really make a city bloom. Like, like, in New York City, there's very little trees, but I'm sure that having trees in Lancaster is meaningful to everyone.
Thank you, Council, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Pike, thank you. I'll just echo Counselor Diaz's sentiments. And, you know, 20 years of service to, and it's, it's not a thing that people see, but literally makes the air cleaner for our children. You know, is, is something not to go unnoticed, and I'm sure we'll have one of us harass you at a, at a digital Shade Tree Commission meeting just to pass along council's goodwill and embarrass you in front of everyone. So thank you for your service, Carl.
I guess I can say I'll look forward to that, Mr. President.
And Carl, I just want to add my thanks to the chorus tonight. I really appreciate all that you've done to serve our urban forest, both protecting it and preserving it and educating about it, which has been a major part of what the Shade Tree Commission has done. And you've just been a stalwart fixture on the Shade Tree Commission, and, and I just, you know, 20 years of service, volunteer service to the city of Lancaster, is going to live on literally along the streets of our city. And, and I hope that you take a point of pride in that and knowing that you are going to be shading our, our city through your efforts for years and years to come. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I remember a decade or more ago, working with you and when you were with Live Green, and that made some important steps forward for us. Thank you.
You're muted.
You got me. Are there any other council comments?
As a president, if I may, Carl, I just want to thank you for the last 20 years. Looking forward to the next 20 years.
I'm not sure about that, Counsel, but I'll give it a shot.
But thank you for all the, all you do, and it's, it's been a good ride for the last eight years with us. Thank you for me, anyway.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royal.
Aye.
Ms. Bacon.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Pike.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Council Resolution Number 14, 2021, recognizing the miraculous recovery of one Ethan Vaughn. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Diaz.
The title is, President.
Oh, of course, Mr. Harris, my apologies.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, recognizing the miraculous recovery of Ethan Vaughn, a decade after his near-fatal automobile accident.
We'll do the motion and second again, if you don't mind.
Approve?
Second.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Diaz.
Well, I'm not sure if Ethan is here, but I can just elaborate that his recovery is something that we know that many people that have gone through some illness or some type of disease that can impair someone for a pretty length of time. And he has really made a recovery to further, you know, his difficulties with rehabilitation and getting fed with a feeding tube, and the fact that I work at a hospital, I know how hard it is for patients to overcome injuries or any disease that can incorpul them. So we recognize him because he is, you know, he's a testimony to many people that have endured these, these traumatic situations, but he's overcome. He's graduated from, you know, the Harrisburg Community College and went to Millersville, and he's doing his internship, so his miraculous recovery for 10 years is something that we can celebrate along with many others as well.
Well, well said, Counselor Diaz, and you were the primary driver of this. You're the primary driver of this resolution, so thank you for, for recognizing Ethan and the significance of his life in this way. Are there any other council comments?
Mr. President, just one note, there is someone with their hand raised in the attendees list. I'm not sure if that's relevant to this resolution or not.
I'm unsure, but I believe that she is scheduled for public comment.
On it. Okay, just wanted to make sure if we're missing, if Ethan was on. I didn't see his name, but.
Yeah, I did not either. All right. Comments from the public. Desiree Cole, do me a favor, if you are, oh, here we go.
I just added her in case. I'm not sure.
I see that. Hey, good evening.
Hello.
Are you, are you here to comment on the resolution recognizing Mr. Ethan Vaughn?
No, I, I'm scheduled for a public address, and I thought I missed it, so this is the first time I'm seeing, so.
Oh, you did not, oh, I'm sorry. No, you did not miss it. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna. So, what we're going to do is we're going to pop you back into the attendees. And then, when it's time for your public comment, we'll bring you back in to make your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any public comment on the resolution honoring Mr. Ethan Vaughn? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roya.
Hi.
Ms. Bakke.
Hi.
Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Diaz.
Hi.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Hi.
Mr. Soto.
Hi.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Hi.
All right. And then, we move to Council Resolution Number 17, 2021. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, calling on Pennsylvania's United States Senators to support the Equality Act and ensure fair treatment for all Americans.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So, I asked Mr. Harris to draft and introduce this legislation. Just calling on Senators Casey and Toomey to support the Equality Act. You know, while we tend to think of progress, especially on civil rights, as linear, over a significant portion of my adult life, we've actually seen several rollbacks and legislation nationally threatening the rights and livelihoods of LGBTQIA+ individuals. And I thought that this council would want to take the opportunity to, as elected officials, to add our voice to the chorus, asking both of Pennsylvania's senators to support this act in the Senate, where it has already been passed by the House, so that, you know, we can be part of the record and say that Pennsylvania said that civil rights for everyone should be the law of the United States of America. Any other council comments?
I really appreciate you bringing this forward. I think especially in our city, often can forget just how different we are in comparison to the county and how I can live my authentic self in, within our city and know that I'm protected and know that I am recognized as an equal. But the second that I step foot outside of the city, that no longer applies and that I can be judged just because of my sexual orientation and actually be hindered in my ability to prosper. And so, many of also of our community members here, our neighbors, our loved ones. And so, I think this is incredibly important that we start to look at how we support an outward movement. Because whereas here in the city, we're okay, we definitely need to be pushing upwards. So, I appreciate you doing this.
I couldn't agree more, Counselor Garcia Molina. Other council comments? From the public? All right, hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roya.
Hi.
Ms. Bakke.
Hi.
Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Diaz.
Hi.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Hi.
Mr. Soto.
Hi.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Hi. Thank you all very much for your support. All right, so we move then to our first public comment period. So, this public comment period is reserved for those persons who have contacted the city clerk prior to the meeting to comment on items not already established on the agenda. The length limit of comments is three minutes. And as always, please begin with your name and where you live. So, what I'm looking for is the 100 block of the street that you live on. I, as a matter of public record, live at 340 College Avenue. So, I might say Ismail Smith-Wadeell, 300 Block of College Avenue, if I was unsure about sharing my address specifically. So, just so we all know that that is the format. Mr. Harris, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, we do. First, we have Desiree Cole.
All right, Ms. Strazza. Good evening, Desiree.
Good evening.
All right, if you'll just give us your name and where you live and then your three-minute or less public comment.
My name is Desiree Cole, 300 Block of Stevens Avenue. My comment is, in September of 2020, Mayor Saris, Sarasi, excuse me, and Pastor Rollin Forbes held a live press conference requesting help in a crisis concerning mental health. And in that request, I am here to help assist and also to receive help and assistance concerning ongoing matters since 2019. And I would just like to schedule an appointment to do so.
Desiree, are you saying that you would like, you'd like to have a conversation one-on-one with the mayor or with the mayor and Reverend Forbes?
And concerning the plea for help in their crisis in September 2020 and also to address other matters since 2019.
Okay, Ms. Cole, my clerk or our clerk, Mr. Harris, is bharris, B-H-A-R-R-I-S, at cityoflancasterpa.com. If you will send him an email with your contact information, he can make sure that that gets to the mayor's office for communication. And so, you could end up scheduling a conversation on the subject. And of course, we thank you for your willingness to help. Of course, mental health is a pressing need across Lancaster County. Does that work for you?
No, it doesn't, because I already went that way and nothing went that way. So, I had to be referred to city council for, like I said, ongoing situations, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, would you like to, would you like to use your time to describe this situation via public comment?
No.
Okay, well, I'm happy to, you know, I'm happy to talk with you. But short of, short of that, or, you know, us discussing here in the meeting, I'm not sure how else to get you scheduled or move the issues that you're describing forward. So, why don't you?
I've been through this before. I've been through this before. I did that process two years ago. I did this weeks ago. So, if to schedule appointment, however, I like that, that's just what I'm requesting with Pastor Forbes and the mayor separately and individually, however, as you go.
Okay, well, in that case, since this is not the venue at which we schedule future meetings, I will give you my phone number, which is also public. So, you know, which is, it's 717-693-7972. And you can shoot me a text, and I will call you, and we can, we can go forward from there. I think that's the best I can offer you at this stage, Desiree.
Okay, let me repeat your number, it's 717-693-7972.
693-7972, you got it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Harris, do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Next, we have Tony Dastro. And Tony will be sharing his screen and showing us a video.
All right, there are no dogs in this video. I checked. Mr. Dastro, of course, begin with your name and place of residence before, before sharing your screen, and you know everything else.
I am Tony Dastro, 700 Block of New Holland Avenue. I don't know as much as people think I might think I know. But let me try and get this screen share going. Or we're going to share screen, desktop one. You know, it's looking like I'm having trouble sharing my screen. Does anybody have the video on hand that they could share it?
I was just about to say that. Please hold on, Mr. Dastro. Mr. Harris, Ms. Strazza, could one of you?
Sure, let me see if I can bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I apologize.
You're okay, Mr. Dastro. Thank you.
Everybody like the brief pause we're having?
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine. I figured I'd fill some space. It's what the human mind does, right? That's why we say, um.
Did we just officially lose Bernie?
See what I do.
That's unfortunate.
Maybe I don't even need to show the video. Have, have most of you had an opportunity to see it?
Yes.
Okay, it's literally just a two-minute video of me cruising around a block downtown showing four legal right turns. The reason why I'm bringing this forward today, and maybe it's especially appropriate with the recognition of Ethan Vaughn, I do have concerns about our pedestrian crossings and traffic flows in the city. The turn that I made in that video has like conflicting messaging for anyone driving through the city. You have, I believe, the road markers say it's just a straightaway lane, but the sign above would give the indication that you can turn right. I have a huge concern with that because we have a right lane designated that is red light so that the pedestrian crossing can have the right of way. But when the red light turns green, the pedestrian right of way gets to stop. However, with this center lane having the confusing information, somebody who's coming through the city unexpectedly might take a right turn. Let's say there's a convention going on at the convention center. They could, they could potentially kill somebody. Now, I think car-centric societies are an issue, and maybe we could make this a broader discussion of downtown being walking only, like some other cities begun to do, like Paris. But I just wanted to bring this forward as literally we have a traffic flow issue in the center of town. And also, I sent you guys a 30-minute video. I don't expect you to watch the whole thing. It's just some record-keeping I did that I like to share publicly. The reason why I have that is because the pedestrian crossing on the zero block of West King, there seems to be confusion using, like, which lane do you go from when you cross that threshold? The tendency seems to be like, two-thirds of the time, someone coming from the right lane on the 100 block will go into the center lane and not the right lane. And the same goes that most people have a tendency that they use the left lane and then go right into the turning lane, even though technically what the habit should be is that both those lanes, the right and left, turn into center and right. And you go, I think you're following the gist of what I'm saying. There we go. So, I will, I will just be quiet, I guess, while this video plays. But yeah, this is really just to point out some traffic flow issues for pedestrians. I think we need to keep these things in mind going forward because we're a city that works to have everybody have access and transportation. It's obvious I was an opponent of the Arrival Live campaign in the past, but I think there's a valid point that, you know, we can focus on making these things better. I don't think anybody had their Arrival Live campaign out with malice. I just thought it was a good intention that didn't go well.
Thank you, Mr. Dastro. So, we're going to watch the rest of this video. And then, unfortunately, your, your time on this comment is up. But I hope that you will also bring this matter to the specific lane shift and signage matter to the Traffic Commission, who pays specific attention to these items and rulings on them.
I had a feeling that would be the case, which is understandable. I just wanted to bring it to council's attention to have more eyes on the ground on it because I only have a brief view from my perspective. I think it's good to have more eyes, and you guys are, you guys are leaders in this community.
That's more than all right, Mr. Dastro. Mr. Harris, as we're wrapping up, are there any other public comments?
There are none, Mr. President.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dastro.
Thank you for your time, and you'll hear from me later, you know.
I am certain. All right. That moves us to reports requested by council. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Okay, that brings us to reports of committees of council meetings from the March 1 committee meeting. We'll begin with Public Safety. Counselor Garcia Molina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety Committee meeting did not take place.
Thank you. That brings us to Public Works. Counselor Soto. You're muted, Counselor.
My apologies. Yes, Council President, thank you. Public Works Committee met on March 1. There was three items on the agenda. Administration Bill Number 6, amending the parks ordinance. The proposal amends the amendments will modernize parks. Ordinance provide consistent regulations and expectations across all city parks. Specifically, they they address personal behavior, including prohibiting smoking and allowing urinating and defecating only in restrooms facilities, limiting motor vehicle use, including drones and radio-controlled vehicles, regulating use of non-motorized vehicles, including bikes, skateboards, skis and horses, addressing activities such as camping, fishing, hunting, and picnicking, and preserving natural and historic resources and protecting flora and fauna. The ordinance also clearly and consistently addresses procedures for securing permitting for exclusive use, such as parties requiring permits for specific activities and enforcement by authorized personnel. Administration Resolution Number 11, 2021, seeking a grant for a pocket park at 339 Street Street in the city. 339 Beaverton Street was acquired by the City Redevelopment Authority. Lancaster Equity Health Discussions with Neighborhood Residents that led to the plan for a pocket park. He said the development of the park is expected to cost two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. Uh, at, has contributed rest, retail has contributed sixty thousand in in-kind services to the design of the park. That amount will be combined with fifty thousand from city to provide one-to-one match for a hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar state grant, which is being sold. Uh, the resolution authorized the application for, for the grant. Also Administration Resolution number twelve. Uh, seeking, seeking a grant for park planning. This resolution authorizes application for a state grant to begin the city's next parks and open space plan. Colin Park was the last park on the current park plan. This will begin a process of re-elevated re-revaluating the city's parks for future use. Uh, this plan is intended to consider city parks as a network and to the the hotel with the city's comprehensive plan. The parks plan will attempt to address the need for active recreational spaces, particularly in the seven and a half of the city. Uh, Mr. Campbell said he expects the parks plan to cost two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to three-hundred-thousand dollars to develop. The city will seek half of that amount through this grant. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Soto. Um, that brings us to economic development. Counselor Royal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Economic Development Committee did meet. We had one item on our agenda. Uh, the item, uh, we'll also discuss later tonight. It was Administration Resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty-one, authorizing a grant agreement for South, Southwest Tech Central Project. Uh, this resolution references a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant by the Redevelopment Capital Assistance Program in which the resolution authorizes a cooperative agreement with the Spanish-American Civic Association for administration of the grant. Uh, Mr. Carlos Guapera and Jose Lopez of SACCA both presented on how these funds will be leveraged for the development of the Southwest Tech Central Project, um, and more on this item later. Uh, that concludes my report, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Royal. Uh, that brings us to Finance. Counselor Beckett.
Thank you very much. The Finance Committee met, um, on, uh, the, at the last committee meeting. Um, and there was one item on our agenda. It was a discussion of a possible refinance of the twenty-nineteen bank note. Um, there are favorable rates at this time, and this may allow us to actually pull out additional capital. Uh, that was, the discussion was for that to be used for additional capital projects, um, and also for, um, anticipated true cost of the East King Street Fire Station. No action was requested by the committee or taken by the committee at this time, but we do anticipate, um, there, uh, to be some uh, request for action at the April committee meeting. So we'll be looking forward to hearing, uh, that at that time, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Beckett. Um, Community Planning, Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Although I was absent at the council, at the committee meeting, I spent the week getting caught up. There were three items on the agenda. Um, one of which was a home fund, the home fund that, uh, Mr. Delf gave an informational report on. And it had several, had a lot of affordable housing in it, and, um, Resolution seventeen for West Vine Street and the one for, uh, I forget the number. For two-fifty-nine South Anne Street. And I noticed that there was another on there for thirty-nine North Lime Street. All three of those will come up on the agenda during the legislating. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Um, and that brings us to the Personnel Committee. Counselor Diaz.
Hi, Mr. President. Uh, the Personnel Committee met March first and reviewed the following. Nomination of Dr. Williams Fife for the reappointment on the Board of Health for a term from April first, twenty twenty-one to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The nomination of Andrew Whalen for rea-for appointment to the Lancaster City Planning Commission for the term of March ninth, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The nomination of Stephen Campbell to the, um, to be appointed for the suburban Lancaster SOAR Authority for the term of March seventh, twenty twenty-one until July twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. The nomination of Barry Kornhauser for appointment of the Public Art Advisory Board to a term of beginning immediately to and continued until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We have already discussed and moving forward the, um, Council Resolution number ten, twenty-one, recognizing Carl Pike for twenty years of service on the Shade Tree Commission. And Council Resolution number sixteen, twenty twenty-one, requiring members of Lancaster of city boards, commission and authorities to undergo training. The resolutions on the agenda for the evening meeting, and, um, I make a motion to be approved for the appointments.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the appointments, um, as a whole. Um, council comments. From the public. All right. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royal.
Aye.
Ms. Beckett.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeau.
Aye.
And, Mr. President, that concludes the personnel, um, agenda.
All right, thank you, Counselor Diaz. Um, give me just a moment. All right, that brings us to our legislative agenda. Um, I think, you know, uh, bring, uh, sorry. That brings us to our legislative agenda, beginning with heritage conservation and historic districts. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Consider the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission and Historical Architectural Review Board for improvements to properties within the heritage conservation and historic districts. And the first is Willow Valley Communities, owner of seventeen West Vine Street. They proposed demolition of a former newspaper printing plant and rear annex structures and construction of a new apartment building. The second is South and Concerned Neighbors, owners of two-fifty-nine South Anne Street. They propose demolition of a rear one-story brick wing facing New Dolphin Street and attached garage and construction of a new two-story community workspace structure. And both of those were recommended, uh, both of those applications were recommended for approval by the Historical Commission. And third, we have thirty-nine North Lime Street, um, Incorporated, owner of thirty-nine North Lime Street. They request installation of a new wrought iron walkway gates and railings, and that recommend, and that was recommended for approval by the Historical Architectural Review Board.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um, with council's permission, um, and uh, I'd like to take these, at least the first individually, given the significance of the project. Um, all right, let's start with, um, seventeen West, uh, Vine Street, so item A on that agenda. So we have, uh, recommendation for approval by the Historical Commission for certificates of appropriateness uh, for the demolition and construction on that, uh, on that site. Uh, is, would a counselor like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the Historical Commission recommendation on both, uh, certificates of appropriateness. Um. Counselor Craig.
Yes. Um, I don't have a lot to add to that, just that, um, I, I do believe that the, the project is worthwhile because it is servicing, um, uh, which, it's age restricted, so it addresses the need for, um, older folks. The, it being in that most vulnerable group along with the homeless and young people, it's providing a place for them to live as well. And them being in that vulnerable group, I, I think is worthy of the project.
Okay, um, is there anyone, is there anyone present, um, from, uh, the applicant and, uh, representing the Historical Commission or the, the Historic Preservation Specialist? Um, anybody falling into those groups, go ahead and, and hear them, uh, hear what they have to say.
Mr. President, I believe, uh, John Swanson and Bill Coak Jr. are both here.
Yeah, I see we've, uh, Mr. Swanson has just been added to the meeting.
Yes, I'm Chris Delfs here.
Um, yeah, please add Mr. Delfs. So, Mr. Delfs, um, if I may, um, it, it has occurred to me, and, you know, I recognize that you, you are not yourself Suzanne Stallings. But it, it occurred to me that, um, you know, previously, uh, the Historical Commission, uh, has, uh, rejected, uh, or recommended for denial projects of similar height to this one, uh, for a number of reasons, you know, being out of, uh, out of scale and alignment, um, with the rest of, with the rest of the city. Uh, but this, uh, this demolition and the proposed construction both received unanimous recommendations of approval for certificates of appropriateness. Do you have any light to shed on what made this project different for the Historical Commission?
Certainly, I, I think it would be helpful to bring in Douglas Smith and Suzanne Stallings if they're on the line as well. Um, they've been managing this process from, uh, from the outset, uh, but I do want to say I've been working closely, um, with, uh, Willow Valley and team on this project for quite a while now. I just wanted to note, um, uh, one, uh, process element here, the, the actual, you had mentioned, um, the height, uh, President Smith-Wadeau, and the height was addressed actually, uh, in, in really two stages. It, uh, the height question did go before, uh, the zoning hearing board, uh, previous to the action, uh, with the Historical Commission, and it was actually the zoning hearing board that had, um, approved, uh, the height, which is, um, on par with, uh, the Marriott Hotel in terms of where it, uh, falls on the skyline. Um, the, the analysis that the Historical Commission did was really about, um, the, the nature of the architecture of the building and how that was compatible or not with, uh, the surrounding context. And I personally, I, I think the architecture team has done a really brilliant job in, um, how, uh, they had taken a contemporary design of this particular scale and really, uh, woven it into the fabric of, of the city. Um, you know, it's interesting, we talk a lot about the character and the importance of our historic city, but I think most of us don't want to, um, cut off the opportunity of, um, new design and, uh, contemporary architecture. And so it was really, this process took a, a great deal of thought in terms of how, uh, this will both of, both fit into this immediate context, but how it might, uh, create a precedent for, uh, other buildings in the future. Um, I, I see that, uh, Mr. Yuan is here, the architect for the project, and, uh, he's done a, a really nice job in expressing some of these, these design choices, uh, to the Historical Commission, uh, and has been really, really successful in that regard. So I, I would, um, maybe just open the floor to Douglas in case he wants to add anything. Who's been, he's been a little closer to the Historical Commission process, but I think it's also important, uh, to give Mr. Yuan, uh, and Mr. Swanson a chance to talk about how they weighed all these options from a design standpoint and how, how they ended up with the architecture uh, of the building that you, that you see today.
Thank you, Mr. Delf. Um, I can briefly, um, speak on just a couple of issues. Um, I will say that regarding the, the demolition, um, the, uh, the existing production building that's there is considered a nonhistoric, non-contributing, um, resource to the Lancaster's, um, National Register Historic District, um, based on its age and style. Um, the, uh, the sighting of the truck parking lot at a major corner, I think, also is, uh, an unfortunate existing design that this new construction does remedy, and, um, I think was likely, uh, favorable to the Historical Commission. Um, based on the previous discussions and on, uh, Ms. Stallings' recommendation, I know that also the preservation of the Yates Building and the, um, stepped height of the buildings around the main tower really allows the Yates Building to, uh, exist, uh, in a, in a way that, um, allows it to be, uh, sort of better preserved in a historical context and have its roof line still maintained from the street view. Um, so those, uh, items I know were of, uh, great importance to, um, Ms. Stallings and the Historical, um, Commission. Uh, I can answer any questions if you have, uh, additional, um, specific questions. Thank you.
Counselor Craig.
I don't have any further questions, but we do want to hear from, um, Mr. Yuan and, and, um, Mr. Swanson.
Please go ahead, gentlemen.
John, John, do you want to make any open, opening, opening comments?
Lester, you can go ahead and start.
Okay. Well, I think, uh, thank you for having us tonight, um, and Douglas and Chris, uh, I thank you for your kind words. Uh, I think Douglas, uh, hit it really right on the mark that, uh, when I was first introduced to the site. Um, and John, John made it very clear to me that one of the big goals for this project was to, um, really make this intersection and reintegrate and bring the community back to this intersection. Um, we, we observed that, uh, the building that's already on the site today, it's very hermetic, it's very insular. Uh, it was, it was built for an industrial use, uh, so, um, although it was very important for the city, it doesn't really contribute to the streetscape of, and the life of the community there. So one of the critical things for us was to think about how this project could, uh, in part re-establish, uh, some of the context in the city that was removed when this building was built. Um, so one of the things we've always done, and because this building is for residential use, um, use the, use the depth of our units to our advantage in terms of amassing and reduce the, the, reduce the profile of the footprint of a twenty-story tower, uh, and how, and try to minimize, uh, that as much as possible in terms of where it met the streetscape. So we've done that very well, uh, on the south side, only about thirty-eight feet width of the tower ever really touches the public streetscape. Uh, on the northwest corner on Mifflin Street where the service alley is, uh, there's a little bit more of the building that comes down there, but that is a service alley that is primarily being used by trucks and some people for, uh, cut-throughs. Um, we've also then made sure that our podium, uh, the, the roof line, the roof, the parapet line of our roof line of our two-story podiums everywhere was carefully calibrated so that it matches and aligns with the cornice lines, um, along East and West Vine Street as well as Queen Street. As you know, Queen Street slopes up very, very, uh, quickly from, um, As you know, Queen Street slopes up very, very uh quickly from um Vine to King Street. Um, and the total rise on our site is eighteen feet, uh, but uh as it continues up to Penn Square, it continues up, I believe, another nine feet, so for a total rise of twenty-seven feet, so the buildings on Queen Street don't have a consistent cornice line because each building, even though there are three floors up, they are kind of starting at a different point in space, and so they are kind of rising as they go. So our wrapper, our urban wrapper around the building is meant to mitigate in transition between the neighboring buildings and the kind of three, three-story traditional high buildings. And let's let's the tower then be sitting in the middle with this wrapper that transitions to that uh to the neighborhood and provide a more gentle landing for the building.
Thank you, Ms. Yuan. Uh, Mr. Swanson, do you have to add anything to add to that?
Just a couple of things. I believe that uh our project is consistent with the uh Building on Strength Strategic Plan put together by the city a number of years ago, which identified the LMP site as one of uh ripe for uh high-rise residential development. So we believe this is consistent uh with the city's wishes uh regarding uh future growth and and economic development within the city. I think it probably goes without saying, but uh I'll talk a little bit about job creation, uh, the support that the residents uh of this building will give to local small businesses uh in the area. We are uh our our investment in the city is not solely limited to uh this building. Uh, as you all are aware, uh, we have uh been working together with Lancaster Equity and Assets uh to redevelop the uh Southern Market site. So we see a lot of synergies uh and really look at this uh from a master planning perspective uh in looking at the two sites uh in conjunction. So I think uh this will also uh be a catalyst uh for the city in uh uh some further opportunities for uh growth and development uh be beyond uh the two sites that we're involved with.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Are there any questions from counsel?
If I may, Counselor Craig?
Go ahead.
Mr. Yuan, do you have a image or a like a uh image of the proposed property to to show?
Yes.
I believe this also exists, though, please do, uh, please do share it. Uh, I believe this also, there are also some images in the notes from the Historical Commission. If anybody would also like to look at those.
Give me a second. I think I shared the wrong screen, right? Try that again. Are you able to see the image on my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. This was the first image that we shared uh with the Historic Commission. And this was a view uh looking from Queen Street. Just it's uh from Vantre, just south of the intersection of Queen and Vine Street with the Southern Market in the foreground um and the tower uh behind it. You'll see that uh this is our podium here. Uh, this is the edge on the Queen Street side. Its cornice line is roughly in line with the central mark, uh, Southern Market, I should say. And that was done on purpose. Uh, this is a two-story volume. There's a uh sort of F and B venue here as well as a ballroom that has a glass, a glass wall on the Queen Street side. Uh, there is a sort of dining terrace pocket park here uh that allows the Yates Building to exist uh on its own. Uh, and we can see the Yates in in its full entirety after the Lancaster Production Building is taken down. Uh, we don't know, we, our intent is to preserve and leave uh the 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 existing brick wall that's there today. Uh, but we won't really know what the state of that is until the production building is taken down. It it's been um covered up for several decades now, but it's our intention to let that remain and preserve that, and we'll do any repairs necessary. There is also another view that I have that uh addresses some of the streetscape questions. And this is another view that is a little closer in, but we we turned off this the Southern Market Building just so we can see the podium, uh, the the two-story elements that here on the left uh to the west contain the our fitness center, uh, has a fitness on the second floor and an indoor pool on the first floor. Uh, this is the portion of the tower, it's about thirty-eight feet wide. It's the only portion of the tower uh that touches down on the uh on a public streetscape. Uh, this is our front door here, and there's a covered port brochure that's underneath this. So even though this building is coming down and it's thirty-eight feet wide, which is in line with the rhythm and proportions of um many of the other buildings that already exist uh along Vine Street. Uh, it also is very open underneath because it has a double high space for vehicles to pull off of Vine Street. And so this is really just kind of looking at that uh from that perspective. As other, as part of our public filing, we had also provided some colored elevations, looking at how how this building on Vine Street, uh, looking at the context of the buildings, both to the west and to the east of our site, uh, Queen Street being here, um, this being the Mosaic Project. Uh, this is the thirty-eight foot wide portion of the tower that comes and lands uh on the ten feet behind the property line on Vine Street. Um, and you'll see that our podium wrapper here and here. Uh, these lines indicate where the existing cornice lines are, um, and that that is reinforced by our podium. Uh, we have two shoulder pieces that rise fifteen feet, and they are meant to, they include units, but they are helping to uh transition the building towards the east and the west as it steps down. Um, this setback here, uh, the tower, the main majority of the tower is set back from Queen Street about ninety-eight feet. Um, so we've made every effort to allow the podium pieces to integrate with the neighborhood and set the tower back wherever it was possible. And again, looking at the Queen Street side, this is a drawing that's very deceptive because although it looks like a giant wall, it's really set back almost a hundred feet. More important for the pedestrian experience is what is really on the streetscape, uh, which is our podium, which is in line with Southern Market. Uh, and you'll see that uh neighboring buildings, including the Yates House, as they move up Queen Street, you'll see there's quite a quite a narrow slope there. Each building is at a, each building's entry point is at a different starting point. So even though this building, the Yates House and Southern Market are equal in uh equivalent in height, they are, their cornice lines are rising as they move up Queen Street. And uh, we also have two more views, uh, an area view where we took the same guiding lines and projected it on this area view. This has been superimposed on a Google Earth photograph. And you see that our cornice line uh is in line in proportion with the neighboring neighborhoods uh as well as along Queen Street, uh, starting with the townhouses uh south of Southern Market, Southern Market itself, Yates, uh, as well as we move up towards uh Penn Square. Uh, and you have the other significant tall towers in downtown, the Greyst and the Marriott, including the Marriott addition, which we added uh to our rendering. And this view, uh, without all those different lines all over the the image, just so for clarity, uh, this is, the tower is set back from Queen Street, ninety-eight feet to the majority of the tower. Uh, this thin, thin part that's thirty-eight feet wide is about ten feet back off the sidewalk, and then you'll see the podium pieces that have outward-facing focuses. Uh, this this lobby will be manned twenty-four seven. Uh, this club lounge uh and retail space here with this dining terrace, which is also then aligned so that is more or less facing the uh entry to the Convention Center on Queen Street. And you'll see that the Yates House uh is allowed to kind of have its own identity and uh its character and proportions are preserved. Uh, nothing overshadows the Yates House. And as a final, uh, we were asked to take a few other views along Vine Street, both west and east of the project. Um, and this is a view uh to the west of the Southern Market and our site. Uh, again, taking the same lines, looking at our cornice lines relative to Southern Market. These cornice lines relative to the Convention Center, the Thaddeus Stevens House uh and other neighboring uh structures on Vine Street. Also looking at the kind of rhythm of our openings, our entryways, uh, center lines of our tower uh in the same proportion, same rhythm that we have found in the neighborhood. And then looking at the mirror image view from the east, east of the intersection of Queen and Vine Street, uh, sort of just standing to the south of the Convention Center. Again, looking at the the relationship of our cornice lines to neighboring cornice lines, uh, this line on the Queen Street, but again, looking at the rhythm of our fenestration, our window openings, and looking at the consequent opening rhythms along Vine Street. And then finally, the last image that we had produced and shared was looking from Penn Square, looking south on Queen Street, uh, to look at what this uh, the massing of the tower would begin to look like within the streetscape and the city skyline. Um, and you'll see that uh when you're in Penn Square, the dominant things in your field of vision are the buildings that are arrayed uh around the square, including these plaza areas that you'll see here. Uh, the Yates House is been is being preserved. Uh, you see one of the shoulders of the building here uh and then the twenty-story tower, uh, which is right here, nestled behind. So that's the 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 number of graphics that we produced uh for the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Run, share the screen. There you go. Are there any other, any further questions from counsel?
Counselor Craig, if I may, oh, good.
Counselor Craig, if I may. It may have been addressed before, but I just want somebody to touch the basis on affordable housing with this project. I I'm sorry, uh, which counselor? Uh, Counselor Soto speaking. Counselor Soto. We we are not developers of affordable housing. Uh, we run a uh life care program. The residents of this uh project, uh, if it's completed, uh, will also uh have the same type of life care contracts that our residents do on our suburban campus. Uh, we understand the importance of affordable housing, we support that, uh, but that is not our business model. We have been successful uh uh developing uh life care communities for over thirty years and um that's what we know how to do, and uh I think we've done it very well successfully over the years. Uh, Willow Valley Communities is a five oh one C three. So we are, we are a not-for-profit organization. But uh our our financial model, our our development expertise is in the area of uh building continuing care retirement communities. Thank you.
Counselor Craig, if I could follow up on that.
Counselor Lena.
Uh, so I really appreciate uh your presentation today, and I recognize that Willow Valley's model is not about affordable housing. I think your model regarding uh folks above the age of fifty-five has worked worked out really well for you, uh, but the demographic that you've attracted is not the majority of our city. Uh, so when it comes to the question of affordable housing, I recognize that you don't do that, but you do support it. So for me, and I've had a lot of people reach out to me with the past week about this, is what is Willow Valley doing to acknowledge the community that is not benefiting from this project?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, um, uh, I think you have to look at our total story regarding our investment in in the city. And that includes what we're doing at the Southern Market Center in creating the uh uh business incubator for for uh low-income individuals who have natural talent uh as entrepreneurs but don't have the resources or the support uh to uh create and build a business. We are investing uh literally millions of dollars uh into making the the city's desire through an RFP process, making that desire become a reality. Uh, I think that uh through the programming uh that's going to occur at the Southern Market Center, uh, which involves uh our working together with Lancaster Equity and Assets, we are making a significant effort uh to support uh job training, business incubation, uh, which is focusing on uh uh city individuals of color, uh, city individuals who represent the immigrant community. That's the focus uh for the efforts at the Southern Market Center. Uh, so although we're not uh answering the question uh or or providing uh affordable housing in the city, uh, we are making a significant uh investment across the street to support uh the neighboring community and support of individuals within the community to try to help them uh to to uh really uh elevate their economic status, create self-sustaining businesses. And uh I think that uh in and of itself is a significant effort uh to to address the not only uh, you know, simply creating small business is uh at Southern Market Center, but as these individuals uh develop, um, increase their income, that's going to have a significant uh impact, uh, I think, on the city uh in other ways. So that's, that's um, you know, our our response. We came into the city uh wanting to do something to give back to the city. And uh, I think by uh executing uh along with our our partners, uh, executing on the city's uh RFP process uh regarding the Southern Market Center, that we're going a long way to do that.
I'm very grateful that you, as Willow Valley, have taken that initiative. I think that commitment to equity work becomes really important, and I think as other white-led organizations are coming into the city to do work, I think that is what needs to be done. I think for me, the reason why I can't really delineate between that work and this work is because this is the literally the largest private-funded project that will happen. And as that is occurring two blocks away from our Duke Street affordable public housing towers that are crumbling, uh, I think we can't have that conversation uh separately. I think as a housing developer to take on such a big project in an area that is so close to one of need, I think we need to be able to have that conversation of what is being considered by the developer in acknowledgement that as this housing project that is not going to reflect our community and how that is impacting the nearby communities and how do we elevate that? Because in the same way that I respect the work that you're doing to elevate and do equity work within entrepreneurship, that's a similar commitment that I would want to see out of Willow Valley when it comes to housing. So that is, I don't know if anyone has anything else to add, but I know that a lot of people have reached out to me that have also been concerned. that have also been concerned about the speed that this conversation is happening around Willow Valley and how the community benefits. So I don't know, Chris, if you also have a chance to share with me a bit more detailed about the community benefits of this project. I know you've been more involved and can probably help me understand a bit better of what the community benefits overall would be.
Well, I think one, one thing that's important here is to distinguish between the different land development processes that we're, that we're going through right now. So the action that is before us tonight is related to the compatibility of the architecture with the historic fabric of the city and whether the council agrees with the historical commission that that is, that is appropriate. But you've sort of introduced an important, larger question about affordable housing that we've, we've talked about a lot. At the, at the meeting, the council committee meeting Monday a week ago, I had provided a report on home funding that the city has allocated to a handful of affordable housing projects. Four of them in particular in the city that add up to 80, 82. It's $2.4 million of affordable housing funding that would generate 82 affordable homes in the city. And the way that we've approached this as an apartment and as an administration is recognizing two things. I think first is that I'm looking at this as a system of housing units, not, not necessarily how many affordable units in every single development project, but as a portfolio of development projects, are we able to produce housing that it, that is at different income levels across, across the scale? I also think that it's important to note, and we'll have more information about this soon after we have some of the results from the affordable housing study that we've commissioned. But one of the things that we're learning early on from, from this economic analysis, and this echoes work that I had done in Washington DC too, is that we, we need housing supply in the city, period. We have a real supply and demand issue happening right now. The, the market is extremely tight, which is pushing up rents. And so even, even though it may not appear this way on the surface, actually having housing units at every price point is going to provide that economic pressure on, on the prices in the city. I all, I want to qualify that, that can't only have units at the higher end of the scale, but we need to be looking at this as a full continuum as opposed to just how many, how many units in one, one single project. And as, as Mr. Swanson explained, for their particular project, that, that's not their business model. One of the things that I thought was really powerful in Lester's explanation to historical commission about some of the design decisions in, for the building, was trying to determine what is the appropriate scale and massing to make the project financially feasible. And that is actually one of the conditions that the historical commission through the ordinance is supposed to consider in, in their review of a project. And Lester, Mr. Yuan had, had described that there were all of these choices in the building about whether they wanted to go higher and make it more slender and set back, or whether they wanted to build at bulk and, and actually have more of an imposition on the streetscape and that it might appear, could appear more imposing had they not made some of the design decisions they did. So a lot of this, a lot of these questions are really wrapped together and I, I appreciate I appreciate the depth of the question because this is what we're wrestling with as a department every day across a whole, a whole set of land development proposals.
If I could just add.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate it, Chris. Go ahead.
Counselor Garcia, Molina, two things to your, to your follow-up. One, you had mentioned, this is privately funded, and I think that that's something that I just want to underscore that there are no specific special tax breaks or other incentives that are being offered to this development. And by right, through ours, through zoning, this is something that is going through the typical process. So this is not a rush process. This is, this is in keeping with the protocols of the city going first before the zoning hearing board around the height. And then obviously, tonight, we're taking up the conversation about the demolition of the printing building. And the historical commissions say as, as it, as whether or not it's in keeping with the historical fabric of the city. And, and at the same time, we're having a very important conversation tonight as it relates to community benefits. And so Mr. Swanson has just talked about Southern Market Center. And I just want to come back to community benefits as it relates to this particular development project. And in my view there, well, there's a few. So one is that this property will be generating tax revenues, both because it will be paying property taxes to the city as well as to the school district of Lancaster. It will be generating taxable income to the extent possible, although Pennsylvania does not generate, does not tax retirement income. There will be jobs that will be affiliated with this, with this site, and Mr. Swansing can speak to that. And then the third, which has been referenced, which is that there will be hundreds of people who will be living in our downtown. And that is something that is, has a significant economic impact, just the way that council has been briefed on the economic impact of convention center attendees and what that means to small businesses and hearing, you know, you know, Zach from the bagel shop to say he's never going to complain about what, you know, about convention center guests coming into the city because he knows that his business is going to do very well on those particular days. And so I, I think that there is, in addition to Southern Market Center and the investments that have been made there, in partnership with Willow Valley, or I'm sorry, with Lancaster Equity, Southern Market Center was purchased for $800,000 and the additional investment that's going into the renovation and, and so on. So I think that there's, there's a, there's a coupling here. And I have tried very hard as we have moved forward on any kind of development projects to make sure, especially in places like Southern Market Center or where we have significantly more influence as it relates to zoning. For example, the former UPMC Hospital that we are having, that there are community benefits that are coming to the city and city residents. And just in keeping with all of this, I do think that the diversity of our city in, in every way is important. And I, I am, when you look at the trajectory of the, I don't know if you remember this, but I shared a chart, I think it was in last year's State of the City. Majority of city residents earn $100,000 or less income. And so the percentage of people who earn over $100,000 is still relatively small as it, as we look at the landscape of the city. Our efforts, of course, are to lift all of our residents up at the same time recognizing that there are real and tangible benefits of bringing in additional residents into the city as it relates to the sustainability of the city long time, long term. So that, that's just my, what I wanted to add in terms of your question about community benefit in totality as it relates to this project. And if Mr. Swanson wants to add anything further, please do.
I appreciate it, Mayor.
If I can, Mayor, just to address the issue of job creation. Of course, the Mosaic project will generate, we're estimating somewhere between 75 and 125 new, new positions. What we're also doing is within the Southern Market Center, establishing an employment office and running shuttle service from Southern Market Center to our suburban campuses. Free shuttle service that can be utilized both by residents and also by team members. So we're looking to hire locally for Mosaic, but also promote employment opportunities for city residents on our suburban campus south of the city. So there will be a significant job creation effort. Put forth significant jobs created, both at the Mosaic project, but we're also hopeful that by providing transportation, we will be able to attract more city residents to work on our suburban campus.
Can I go ahead and make a few questions here, Counselor?
Counselor Diaz.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is revenue. Can you give me an amount? Can you tell me exactly how much revenue we're going to get in the city of Lancaster?
I don't have those projections at this time, Counselor Diaz. And as the projects move forward, I would be happy to provide an anticipated revenues as it relates to tax generated. And I believe the school district would be able to provide something similar.
Okay, next question. What I heard from Mr. Swanson is 75 to 125 employees?
That's correct.
And how much are they going to be paid?
Well, I mean, they run the gambit in terms of positions in Mosaic. I don't have all of our wage scales at my fingertips here. But it's going to be everything from management level positions to entry-level positions.
So we, we, we have these futuristic numbers, but no actual concrete numbers of what they would be paid or what taxes is going to be coming in. Can you give me an idea how many people will be living in these apartments or condos or whatever you wish to call them?
Yeah, they're, they're apartments. They are not condos. Right now, we're at 147 apartments.
147. So we don't know exactly how many people will be residing there as, as of right now.
Well, you know, we're anticipating that, that this project will have a significant number of couples at entry, probably 80%. So it's 260, trying to do math in my head here.
And do you foresee having a parking garage?
We have secured a lease on the, the LMP garage for 250 parking spaces. 150 of those parking spaces will be secured, numbered spaces for the residents of the building. We will be utilizing some of those spaces in our operations. And then we will make whatever the residual is available to residents who have second vehicles. So we, we have secured parking.
And Counselor Diaz, I'll just say that given that this was a conversation specific to the historical commission, I did not come prepared with the, the information that you are requiring or asking for. And so we'll be able to follow up with you, and I'm sure Mr. Swanson can provide your, the staffing salary schedules in a, in a future correspondence.
I'd be happy to do that.
And Mayor, if it's, if it's helpful, I always, I don't want to miss a chance to connect the dots of some really important work that has just recently been happening. I know the council is aware that this community benefits question has been really important one for me personally and one for the planning bureau. And late last year, the council did pass the updates to the subdivision and land development ordinance, which had included the community benefit survey. So those, that information, a lot of the information that you're asking for in those stats are related to community benefits are now tied to the land development process, which is of course related to the historical commission process, but a little bit different in terms of the way the project tracks through the process. So just wanted to bring that back around because that's something that we had talked about in the, in the general sense, late last year as being an important thing. But as we start to see projects come through the pipeline this year, they will be required to produce a, a statement or an explanation of those benefits through that, that required survey. So I just wanted to, just wanted to note that for the record, too.
Council President, may I move to table?
You absolutely may. Would you mind holding off while I ask a question? I just don't, I don't want to end the conversation on the, on the motion on the table because I have a question I think is relevant to counselors. So Mr. Delft, you mentioned the, first of all, thank you, Lester and, and John for a compelling presentation and all of the information and clear due diligence you've, you've done on this project to date. Director Delft, you mentioned, sorry, the subdivision of land development ordinance and the land development process, which just reminded me to ask, does this project, another project has gone before zoning hearing board? And it's here in front of us because it's gone before the historical commission and received approval at both steps. Is there a timeline for, at what point they might appear before the planning commission? And, you know, will they appear before the planning commission on, on this project?
The answer is yes. I'm going to let Douglas jump in and talk about timeline if he's prepared to talk about timeline tonight. Douglas, do you, do you have that information at your fingertips?
Yes, I do. And Council President, I'm happy to offer some information. Again, I, I should say that this is tentative, a tentative schedule because, and in fact, I saw that Mr. Bill Cook Jr. is also on the call in case there needs to be any additional clarifications here. But the next steps that are on the schedule that I'm, I'm looking at, that's preliminary, is certainly shade tree commission and traffic commission. They hope to have those decisions made ahead of submitting a land development plan. The, these dates have been shuffled around a little bit, but at the moment, there is a tentative city planning commission review of the project in late April, could be early May. There would not be a vote for the preliminary land development plan until potentially the end of August or early September. So as of now, this project is expected to go through both preliminary and final land development so that the city can really kind of get two bites of this apple and be as thorough in the design review as possible. And then the final plan could be submitted immediately after the approval of the preliminary, preliminary plan. That process is expected to go much faster. And currently, the, the schedule would anticipate getting approval from the planning commission in November of that final plan and recording the land development plan before the end of 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
I'm sorry. I'll just say that there, there are a number of other approvals that are wrapped into that process that maybe it's worth mentioning. Of course, the Lancaster County Planning Commission does need to make a recommendation on the plan as well. There are a number of other state-level permits that the city is involved in regarding both stormwater, traffic, and a couple of other things as well. So So erosion sediment control plan. So there are a variety of other components that are rolled into that land development process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And that, that final time that it goes before the Planning Commission, would that then generate a recommendation that comes before council? Or would that be final within the Planning Commission?
So it would be final at the Planning Commission. The City of Lancaster is one of just a couple of municipalities in the county that grants that power to the Planning Commission. That was done many, many years ago, decades ago, not sure of the year. And so at, at that time, that the Planning Commission provides its final approval, there still are conditions that would likely need to be met, including providing the city a financial guarantee for all improvements and the public right of way and many on private property as well that would likely come in the form of a loan from a bank or a letter of credit from a bank. And there may be other designs, design issues that need to be remedied before we would sign the plan, sign the plans and allow them to be recorded. At that point, once the plan is recorded, building permits could be pulled if they were lined up. So that would be the, the process to achieving building or demolition permits.
Okay. Thank you. I think, thank you for answering those questions, Chris, Douglas. I will just note to you, Counselor Garcia Molina, with thanks to Counselor Craig for her continued forbearance, that if the item in question is tabled per chapter one fifty-five of our code historic districts, this is our first consideration, I believe, of a request. And so a decision must be rendered up or down within, within sixty days, just so that we're all aware of what, of what it means to, to table this. So that, you know, we, we do in fact have to act on it. Otherwise, and, you know, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. The code of the City of Lancaster does not allow for these things to sort of die off of the table. It would be presumed at the end of that sixty days that the recommendation was approved and the certificates of appropriateness would be granted. So, but I believe you were going to make a motion and I appreciate you bearing with me to allow me to ask another question. Counselor Garcia.
Well, then, Mr. President, would you find it best if we table to the committee meeting next month so we can have further discussion about this? Or do we have to table it to next meeting?
I, so the, you can make the motion as it stands. My, and so you can make the motion to the next meeting or, you know, to a different meeting than that. But I think I would just say in, in, in the best interest of everyone involved, that it's probably better to to adjudicate one of these things.
The twenty-third.
Yeah, more quickly and then, and just ask for any information that we need to make a decision as rapidly as possible. And if you feel that you need more time, of course, make the motion that you wish to make. But I generally think it's not the, it's not, hold on, let me back up because I've been rambling for a while and I'm making my point.
I understand, Mr. President.
The point of tabling, it seems, would be to take the time that you feel council needs to get as much information as possible. And of course, you know, if that vote goes, of course, we should, you know, take the, the necessary time, but also not dawdle to avoid making, making a decision. Does that make sense?
It needs complete sense, Mr. President. Go ahead.
Second it, because I think we do need to have more discussion.
And I would appreciate just for, for our team to have specifics about the questions that need to be answered. I've heard two, two things tonight. One is around tax revenues to, to the city, which is a question that we can answer. And, and a pay scale related to the positions that will be employed at the site. Are there additional items? And I, and I do just have to say that wow, I don't. Go on.
May I cut in real quick here? There's additional things that I, I feel that people need to understand. We're looking at traffic. We're looking at neighbors that are, that are going to be in the vicinity while this construction is being done. And has anybody given the opportunity to even talk to those neighbors that are nearby?
Yes, and
Important thing that people keep forgetting, people do need to work. They do, they do need to rest. There's children in that area. And that goes along West Vine Street, that goes all the way down South Queen Street, or I guess that would be South Queen. I can't remember, but that's what my concerns are.
And, and Counselor Diaz, I appreciate those concerns. And they are all as the steps that have been outlined by Douglas. And I also just have to say that, that each step along this process, there are additional hurdles that need to be cleared. Now, all of those hurdles have been cleared at this juncture, nor can they be until there is an opportunity for the project to move forward. And so I, I believe that we can provide you a summary, as Douglas has outlined it tonight, that takes into account some of the issues that you are raising. This has not come before Traffic Commission and will not come before Traffic Commission until the Historical Commission, until this vote is taken. And so there's a sequence that happens as we move through this process. And I want to make sure that your concerns are being met, recognizing that some of them may come later. And I will not be able to answer or predict the conversations that will happen on Traffic Commission because that is a whole different set, a whole different body. Although Douglas and I and Counselor Soto are liaisons to Traffic Commission, but that is also staffed by additional folks from DPW, community members, and also the Police Bureau, as an example.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pardon me. Sorry, President. I just want to also, you know, bring out the fact, just like Counselor Garcia has says, we're constantly promising our community to have actual low income or affordable income housing. And we just keep building and building, but we don't see, I, I don't see anything going forward, except what, eighty-two units? While we have thousands of people, there's, they're sitting waiting with their vouchers to actually have a place to live that's affordable?
I don't disagree with you, Counselor Diaz. And, and we also have just briefed you on the home dollars that we do have available to put into affordable housing in addition to the eighty to one hundred and twenty units that we just moved forward as part of the HDC project on two hundred and fifty College Avenue. So I, I don't disagree that there is an affordable housing crisis here in Lancaster and across the country. And I would also just point out to counselors that none of those issues that are being raised are situated in the Historical Commission ordinance. And so I just want to be clear that this is a, this is a motion that's being brought to you by the Heritage Conservation and Historic District. And there, we have to, as much as we don't like it, have to operate within that ordinance. And the issues in which council can decide to vote yea or nay must be situated within that ordinance. At the same time, it is council's prerogative to ask for more information about the project as a whole, which we are happy to provide. And that information can, cannot be used to vote on this particular issue.
To add to that, I fully recognize that. And for me, really, the motion to table comes from an understanding that even while the time that we've been having this meeting, I've gotten multiple text messages with questions about this particular issue. And so to me, in addition to the information that you're providing, and then what I would also supplement that is, Chris, when you were talking about the community benefits and all the documents that you've shown to us in the past, if there's a way to get those as well so that I'm able to have a better understanding of really where this development is going and then being able to have more time to engage constituents that have questions and answer those before I could take a vote on this and feel confident in taking a vote. But I recognize that the question before us is, is about the Historic Commission in that particular ordinance. But where I lack the confidence is in being able to say, I will vote for this. And as a city counselor, have had to take, have taken the time to be responsible and acknowledge my duties in communicating the information, as I personally don't have totality of understanding of all these moving pieces, which is why I appreciate this conversation. And that's my reasoning really is to have more time is to engage community constituents and also gather this information to have a better understanding. Because also, if I was understanding Douglas correctly, after this, really, our only involvement as council, where we have some decision-making and have some authority is in the Shade Tree Commission that's coming up for us. And then after that, we're kind of hands off. And so that, to me, is why I would like to make a motion to table this until next city council meeting on the twenty-third.
Yes, and thank you, Counselor Garcia Molina. And I, I just say that although council will not have necessarily a vote on this project after this, that does not mean the public does not have a say as it relates to the Planning Commission and the meetings of the Planning Commission.
There is a motion on the floor.
A seconded.
There is a motion and a second to table this item until the March twenty-third meeting of council. Council comments on the motion to table.
I, I just want to add that we're voting up or down on the recommendation for the Heritage Conservation District. And I know there's questions out there from a lot of individuals, but we're here to make a decision on the Heritage Conservation recommendation. And I think we should stay on that and get our answers, get our answers, questions answered at, at the appropriate time. It's all, it's just the way I feel on it.
Thank you, Counselor Soto.
Thank you. I would agree with Counselor Soto that that is the nature of our decision this evening. And also that there are definitely a lot of questions from the community that deserve answers, that are great questions, the community needs those questions answered. And by us tabling it, we are putting off their answers to those questions and their ability to have input directly to the bodies that will help make those decisions about which they have questions. So I, I am not supporting tabling this evening. Thank you.
Are there any other counsel, please?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. And, and maybe Mr. Swanson can elaborate a little bit more on this. But, you know, I, I know even prior to my time in council, there have been numerous conversations around the development project, not only for this specific project, but all those, also Southern Market. From my understanding, there's also a community, community engagement personnel that has been hired to help with community engagement, to inform and communicate with the public more around these projects. Is that correct, Mr. Swanson?
That is correct. We've recognized the need to engage the community to get out more information, to speak to the neighbors. So we, we had, have created a position within our organization that is dedicated to that effort. And Chris Ballantyne has been hired. He's on board now for a couple of weeks. And he will be heading up that effort for us.
Thank you for that clarification. That's all, Mr. President.
And I would like to echo Counselor Baker's sentiments because the community does have a right to have their, their questions answered sooner rather than later. That being said, I'm not in favor of tabling.
Okay. Are there any other council comments on the motion to table, to be clear? Okay. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President.
Forgive me, public comments on motion to table, yes?
It would be limited to motion to table, yes.
Yeah. Okay. I see we already have one hand. Mr. Anthony Dastro.
Do I look good?
Go ahead, Tony.
Tony Dash was seven hundred block of New Holland Avenue. So the most vulnerable group in the city is the homeless. This project will only further their plight and displacement and generate more homeless people out of our residents. Here's an adaptive reuse project we can use to be a global leader. Demolition is open-heart surgery to the city organism and not sustained.
Mr. Dastro, I feel like I have to ask you to hold. Right now, we're talking about not the, the thing itself. I need a comment that is germane to the actual motion to table. So if you, you know, one of your comments is, is specific to whether or not council should table the item. I just want to make sure that that's where we're headed and not the, as a procedural matter and not as to the project as a whole. Unfortunately, that's where we are.
So what I can say that I think I'm following what you're saying. The Gold Goose Party, which I'm running with, has put out a petition this weekend for sixty-seven, and it has sixty-seven signatures, which is ten more than you guys have seen because it's getting signed as we speak even. To table this motion is not to keep the public out of the process because this building has future significance that if demolished, if approved for demolition, we cannot go backwards. Sorry, I wasn't sure because of the screens and the highlighting. So we're not saying no by tabling, and we're not even saying no by saying no later. What we're doing is saying not right now. We're saying that these are good plans, these are decent plans. I appreciate that Willow Valley's come forward with this because we need this level of investment in the city. But this could get out of control really fast. And this is the, this is the appropriate check and balance. I don't believe that the Historical Commission took this into full consideration, how this building is literally where printing happened for one of the oldest newspapers in the country. I get it's not the prettiest building, but it's, it's a utilitarian building. It's perfect for adaptive reuse. We can make this building an exemplar of how we can be a global leader, and that's history in the making.
Thank you, Tony. Charming, charming as always. I appreciate your comments. Did you have more on the motion to table? Oh, and I guess not. All right, we've moved along. Are there any other public comments on the motion to table itself? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
On the motion to table, and to be clear, it's for the meeting on the twenty-fourth rather than the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Mr. Royo. Ms. Baker?
No.
Ms. Craig?
No.
Ms. Diaz?
For the record, aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Soto?
No.
President Spethwaydo?
I vote yes, but it's four to three, and we're dealing with this tonight. All right. Okay, we are now back to the motion itself, the motion on the Historical Commission recommendation. If you're having trouble following along at home, we do have fun at these council meetings. Are there, I guess that depends on how you define fun. But are there, I believe we were in the midst of council comments, though I had generally sensed that we had come to where we were coming on most of them, but if that is the case, I will hand the floor back to councillor Craig to open for public comment or whatever else she'd like to do.
That, that's, would be fine. I think council has gotten other questions answered or some form of information that will get either now or later. And are there any questions from the public?
You know there are. You know there's-
Of course, of course, of course. Why not?
Hello again. Tony Dash at 700 block of New Holland Avenue.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, Faith. I'm sorry, councilperson Craig. If Willow Valley wants this building gone so horribly, then John Swanson should give us an assurance that they will use the wealth generated by Willow Valley in perpetuity to support the homeless in writing. We need to guarantee all people in this city protection, everybody. This is our only, this is our only opportunity to feasibly support the homeless in this way in our urban core. There is no going back from this decision. This is literally the biggest decision the city could make for decades, if not the century to come. I have spoken to every single one of you as individuals this entire week, because I am frantic about the damage this could do to the people I love. But people like Michelle who live on the streets. We know, we all know these people as well. We have to say no to this in order to protect the people we love. I am begging you guys. I'm begging you all. I'm sorry. To please decline this so we can do further review, because our city needs, our city needs to expand this conversation before the building goes, not after. We only have this one opportunity. Willow Valley, you're wealthy enough. If you want to build a high-rise in the city, Park City Mall is within the city limits, and feel free to purchase an empty parking lot from them. I would love to see a high-rise go next to our biggest park. I am sure the residents would love that. We can do something new and creative here and revitalize our suburban mall, which is dying, and provide not just jobs through your structure, but through the mall itself that is dying and rotting before us. We need to act. We need Willow Valley, we need you to be a leader here in a way that we've never seen before. This is not just about caring for the elderly. This is about caring for everyone who ever hopes to use your facilities. And with that, I don't know what else I can say. I've spoken to you all this week, and I sincerely hope that you will vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Dastro. Are there any other questions from the public ever? Or comments?
Uh, no, I am not seeing any others.
Okay. Council president, I'll turn it back over.
Thank you. All right. Hearing nothing more. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
No.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
No.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Smith-Whedell?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
All right. And now everybody can take a breath while I read through this. Item B, Mr. Harris, South End Concerned Neighbors.
Just wanted to thank you, city council. Yep. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. President, did you want me to read the description again?
Yes.
So South End Concerned Neighbors, owner of 259 South End Street, proposed demolition of a rear one-story brick wing, facing New Dolphin Street and an attached garage, and construct a new two-story community workspace structure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councillor Craig?
Just based on a description, I'm hoping everybody got in your, in their, in their packet. It looks like a great project. It's going to do a lot for South End Street and that corner of Dolphin. New construction is welcomed in the neighborhood as far as I'm concerned.
And I'll just add that this has been a project that Ms. Darlene Bird and South End Concerned Neighbors have been working on for some time. They're partnering, and I believe this is elucidated in the materials, with Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology to help. They've been providing architectural services and and look forward to moving this project forward. And I know that Ms. Bird is actively involved in fundraising at this time, as the city has supported and provided letters of support for this effort moving forward.
There you go.
Did we have a motion and a second?
Yes, we did.
All right. Council comments? From the public? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Whedell?
Aye.
All right. 39 North Lime Street. I don't think we need to read the description again, but I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council comments? From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
All right.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Whedell?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to ordinances for first reading. Bill number six, 2021. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. An ordinance of the city, of the council of the city of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, referred to as the City of Lancaster Parks Ordinance, providing for the comprehensive regulation of parks. The ordinance explains its purpose, establishes rules of construction, defines terms, establishes hours that parks are open, establishes regulations regarding including, including personal behavior, recreational activities, vehicular use, preservation of property, natural resources and wildlife, and merchandising, signs and advertising, regulates group activities and exclusive use, authorize, authorizes and describes municipal uses, establishes operational procedures for the issuance of permits, the changing of permit fees and the creation of rules and regulations, provides for its enforcement, and establishes penalties for its violation, repeals inconsistent ordinances, provides for the severability, and provides it should become effective in accordance with Pennsylvania law. The title, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry. I've lost my place on the agenda. Forgive me. Councillor Soto?
Thank you, council president. I, I have nothing more to add than what I stated earlier. Unless Mr. Campbell has anything to add, we're ready to move on for a vote.
It's a, it's for first reading, but-
Oh, it's for first reading? Okay. No, I don't have anything else to add.
Are there other council comments? Okay. Bill number seven, 2021. Mr. Harris.
Mr. President, if I may, I just wanted to alert council members that I received a slightly revised edition of bill number six, and I'll be distributing that to council members prior to next week, or I'm sorry, prior to the next meeting, so that they'll have an opportunity to review it. There's only minor changes that have been made between the version that has been distributed to you and the one that I received this afternoon.
Okay. Well, in that case, Mr. Campbell, why don't you illuminate for us a little bit?
Sure. Thank you very much for, for the opportunity, and I'll be very, very brief. The reason that we initiated putting together these regulations was, is pretty much stated in the very, very lengthy description of the, of the bill. The, the pieces that are, are most important were to align the regulations of all of our parks to be one, rather than a series of different sets of regulations that applied to different parks. And for us to be able to have a greater sense of uniformity. The two changes that, that Mr. Harris referred to give a bit, bit greater clarity to the noise concerns that had been raised at the committee meeting, and it, and it filled in one of the blanks, which was how many people would be at a, would be considered not a large group when talking about picnicking. But otherwise, the, the regulations are pretty straightforward. I think they, they provided a huge sense of clarity, and as you'll see, as was indicated by the honoring of Carl Pike earlier this evening, the issues at DPW right now have a lot to do with the parks, the open space, the trees, and the natural setting of the city of Lancaster.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All right. If there's nothing else on that item, we'll then move on to bill number seven. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. An ordinance of the council of the city of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, amending chapter 125 of the Code of the City of Lancaster, discrimination, to allow appointment of alternative members of the Human Relations Commission to require at least one member of the commission to be fluent in Spanish, to change the name of the Board of Directors to the Human Relations Commission Advocacy Council, and to require, at city council's discretion, oral presentations of commission reports to provide for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, provide for the severability of the ordinance, and provide that the ordinance should become effective in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. So as we discussed at the committee meeting, this is our first pass at providing legislative support to the, to the Human Relations Commission and hopefully Advocacy Council. And the, the changes that we're looking at in the proposed ordinance come from the board and commission chairs. This is part of the support that they've, they've asked for, and it is not probably the final word on updates that we'll make to the discrimination ordinance, but we wanted to go ahead and move on these. Now, this is a first reading, so no, no action to be taken, but I'll, I'll open it up for other conversation on these updates to the discrimination ordinance.
Just to say that to council that, and to appreciate President Smith-Whedell in moving this forward, and to also say that we are working diligently to recruit new members of the commission, and council president and I are working in tandem related to that, and also to add that we are making a staff liaison as a permanent resource to both the commission and the newly named board, and I'm still tripping over that, President Smith-Whedell. So can you remind us? Yeah, but can you remind us what it will be again?
Advocacy council.
The advocacy council and the Human Relations Commission board. That, that liaison will be our solicitor, Mr. Barry Handwerker, and he will be providing staff support to both entities to aid them in moving their work forward.
Okay. Anything from the public on update to discrimination ordinance? Okay, we will move right along then. That brings us to resolutions of which we have several. We begin with administration resolution number 11, 2021. Mr. Harris.
Resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster requesting a Community Conservation Partnership Program grant from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to be used for the Beaver, Beaver Street Pocket Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Councillor Soto?
I just want to reiterate that this is something that has come out of the neighborhood themselves, the neighborhood residents after meeting and with the organizations they have met, they've decided this is what they want, and I don't see why we shouldn't apply for a grant to, to get this done. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything else to add on this one?
I would only say that the, the lion's share of the match actually has come from either Rockwell or the Lancaster equities with the support of the community behind them. So we are, we are looking for, looking to make a relatively modest addition so that we can fulfill the $110,000 match to DC, DN, DCNR, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Are there other council comments? From the public? Okay. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Whedell?
Aye.
All right. That brings us to administration resolution number 12, 2021.
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster requesting a Community Conservation Partnership Program grant from the Department of Community and Natural, I'm sorry, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to be used for the development of parks and open space plan.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Councillor Soto?
Oh, council president, I have nothing more to add than what I stated earlier, unless Mr. Campbell has anything to add to it.
He was, council member Soto was very complete in his description. I just want to reemphasize that the last plan was generated in 2009, 12 years ago. We've, we've culminated that plan with the, with the opening of Coolington Park, and it is now time to reinitiate the parks planning process in conjunction with the capital plan.
And I'll just add to that, that I've asked Director Campbell to provide to me a list of some of the parks that we are going to be making some additional investments in over the year, in the year ahead. And I'll, I'll be happy to share that with you, councillor Soto, as part of Public Works Committee and, and other members of council, because we, we did, we did make major, major investments in, in many of the larger parks, with the exception of, of Reservoir Park, but there are smaller parks throughout the city that we are really turning our attention to. And many of them are in the southeast neighborhood, and so we're making a commitment to advance those park improvements. and so um, we're making a a commitment to advance uh, those park improvements.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right, are there any other council comments? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roya. Ms. Bacon.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. All right, um, that brings us to council resolution number thirteen, Mr. Harris.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Lancaster commending the use, uh, I'm sorry, condemning the use of conversion therapy on minors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, um, so uh, I I introduced um, this this resolution, um, and ultimately uh, it is hopefully the the first step, um, the Lancaster LGBTQ plus Coalition um, asked council and the administration to uh, what what it was that we could do um, to send a strong signal and indeed uh, ban conversion therapy um, within the city of Lancaster, because this practice is not in line with our values, and it's it's not in line, for example, with the text of the uh, discrimination ordinance or other anti-discrimination protections um, that we have. So I'm hopeful that we will be able uh, to get to uh, to get to that place, because I think that's a strong statement. Um, but first, I wanted council uh, to resolve and say uh, that this practice isn't um, isn't welcome in our city, um, and I uh, man, queer kids have it hard enough, uh, and um, I'd I'd like to see this uh, banned and reviled, not just in the city of Lancaster, but in the county of Lancaster and across the, across the Commonwealth, frankly. Um, so uh, with that, that's that's my pitch on the resolution, um, other council comments are of course welcome.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, can you give us a clarity or a description of what it means?
I can, um, so conversion therapy uh, refers really to a fairly large basket of uh, of practices, um, uh, called under the name of therapy, described as therapeutic tactics uh, or approaches that ultimately um, attempt by one method or another, um, many of which uh, have been characterized by credible mental health professionals as psychological abuse, um, to uh, take a young person um, who is uh, lesbian, gay, bisexual, uh, transgender um, or otherwise queer, um, and make them uh, conform um, to a you know, a quote-unquote heterosexual lifestyle uh, that practitioners of this pseudoscience believe uh, is is better. Um, there are a a number of resources, including from the Bradbury Sullivan um, LGBT Center, for anybody uh, watching along at home, um, to hear more about uh, the details of these practices um, and where they are uh, banned or resolved against elsewhere within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Any other council comments?
Yes, Council President, and this might sound way out there, but uh, it takes me back to the dark ages and the Inquisition. If you understand what I'm talking. And I don't see how any modern society can support these processes that have gone on long enough. So I urge you all to support it, support this, and well, yes. That's all, Council President.
Thank you, um, Counselor Garcia Melina.
I was just gonna add, it's literally pseudoscience, there is no evidence to show that it works, um, I don't care how many buckets of water or how long you hold me underwater, I will not be a heterosexual man, there's no evidence of that. Um, and so I think for us to be able to take a stand for the meantime, until we can legitimately find ways to ban it within our city, uh, to let the rest of the state know that we are in support of their efforts of conversion therapy ban, um, I think that's a great first step, and like you were saying, the biggest impact of this is youth, uh, and I think they're the most impressionable, and also the ones that we need to do the best that we can to protect and and serve uh, on their behalf, so I'm just really appreciative that we're both addressing the Equality Act, but also conversion therapy ban today, I really appreciate all of your support um, as a member of the LGBTU plus community in this work, I'm just really grateful to work alongside you.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia Melina. Any other council comments or questions? Or from the public? Okay, uh, hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roya.
Aye.
Ms. Bacon.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, all, um, thank you very much. Ah, that brings us to um, administration resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty one, Mr. Harris.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster authorizing the execution of a cooperat- cooperation agreement with the Spanish American Civic Association in connection with the Southwest Tech Centro R cap project at six fifty-one to six seventy-one High Street and six seventy Lafayette Street, Lancaster, Pennsylvania, one seven six zero three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Counselor Royal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, as I mentioned in my committee report, uh, this is in regards to a five hundred thousand dollar grant by the Redevelopment Capital Assistance Program in which the resolution authorizes a cooperative agreement between SACAA and the city, uh, where the city will serve as the administrator for the project um, known as South Southwest Tech Centro. Um, so this uh, project specifically, SACAA is working on workforce development efforts there around education and construction training, um, as well as other services that are going to benefit and uh, the community, and also complement their Tech Centro Center that's located in the southeast side of Lancaster City. If Director Dose, if there's anything you'd like to add to that?
Counselor Royal, you did a terrific job, I don't really have anything to add other than to say that we have partnered uh, with community organizations in the past, and we're pleased to serve as uh, administrator for this grant um, for the improvements of Tech Centro, it's a great project.
That is all.
Any other council comments? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roya.
Aye.
Ms. Bacon.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Okay, um, administration resolution number sixteen, twenty twenty one.
The resolution of the City Council of the City of Lancaster directing that all persons appointed or or reappointed to boards, commissions, or authorities of the city of Lancaster are required, as a condition of their appointment or reappointment, to attend an information and training session with the business administrator and or city solicitor within one hundred days of their appointment or reappointment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, this is Personnel Committee, so um, Counselor Diaz.
I don't really have too much to add to that. I think we discussed it earlier. Does anybody else have any comments?
Counselor Diaz. Uh, just a comment that uh, I appreciate that that this is happening. Um, I think it is um, overdue and um, excited that we'll we'll be hopefully moving forward with this. Also appreciating the extra work that this will, this will take uh, to get all this done, because we do have um, hundreds of volunteers, um, residents of the city, serving on boards, commissions, and authorities, and it will take time to get through everyone, um, and just appreciating the work of of the city staff that are going to help make this possible. Any other comments?
Okay, Mr. President.
All right, um, not seeing any comments from the public, hearing none, uh, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roya.
Aye.
Ms. Bacon.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. All right, that concludes our legislative agenda, um, which brings us to our second public comment period, open for comment about issues not on the agenda, duration of comments is limited to three minutes, start with your name and address. Would anybody like to make comment at this time? Okay. Um, that brings us to the report of the mayor, Mayor Sriracha.
Good evening, council, thank you, uh, Council President, I have three items uh, for tonight. First, uh, as you are all aware, I and my administration are committed to assuring that the city of Lancaster's Bureau of Police provide professional public safety services that advance our vision of providing a stronger, more equitable uh, Lancaster block by block and align uh, with the city's core values of quality, teamwork, respect, and integrity. Further, we are committed to incorporate best practices consistent with twenty-first century policing pillars related to policy, training, and ongoing operations. As a logical next step in assuring these commitments are realized, and as a precursor to seeking accreditation through the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement uh, Accreditation Commission, the Police Bureau issued an RFP seeking a qualified individual or entity to undertake an independent comprehensive review of its policies and procedures. In response to that RFP, the city of Lancaster has entered into an agreement with CNA, a nonprofit research organization with a strong history of delivering high-quality, independent, and objective reviews of police policy, training, operations, and real-world instant response to local jurisdictions such as ours. CNA is at the forefront of emergency, emerging best practices in policing and is an expert in law enforcement practice, research, reform, and community engagement. CNA's work with the city will come in three phases, the first being a review of the current policies, interviewing members of the Bureau and stakeholders, and community listening sessions, as well as data analysis. The second being the development of proposed new and or revised policies and the drafting of a proposed policy manual. And the third being a presenting of findings and proposals in a virtual community meeting, depending on the timing, let's hope we're gonna get to a real live in-person community meeting, and the submission of a final policy manual to the Bureau. We're excited to announce this new engagement for the city and its Bureau, and will continue to provide updates uh, to all of you and the public uh, as uh, the engagement progresses. Item number two, uh, the Emergency Rental and Utility uh, Assistance Program uh, managed by the Lancaster County Housing and Redevelopment Authorities launched yesterday, March the eighth. Uh, this program aims to allocate federal funds to support Lancaster County residents impacted by the COVID pandemic and are in need of rent or utility payment relief. The city of Lancaster encourages both residents in need of relief and customers receiving water to take, from the city, to take advantage of this program. Uh, the city provides water to residents and many neighbors in the county, uh, and the city has not enforced uh, water shut-offs for the past twelve months, and will not resume water shut-offs for non-payment until at least June the first, twenty twenty one, to ensure residents and customers have time to access support from this program. The city will be sharing information about this program with customers who are currently behind in payment by sending letters uh, to all of those uh, customers. Uh, eligibility criteria uh, can be found at lancasterhelp dot rent, and the first step is filling out an online application followed by uh, an additional uh, documentation. Uh, this uh, this fund can cover uh, any arrears uh, that have occurred, have been incurred since March the twelfth, uh, twenty twenty. Let's see, uh, and so also there's a helpline uh, with a specialist that can answer questions about that program Monday through Friday, nine to five, and that information can also be found uh, at lancasterhelp uh, dot rent. And then finally, item number three, which is to say that city residents are now able to register for a vaccine at vaccinatelancaster.org or by calling uh, seven one seven five eight eight ten twenty. That phone line is gonna be staffed Monday through Friday from eight thirty to five. The Vaccination Center will be open by appointment only from eight AM to six PM, seven days a week. And I just wanna say thanks uh, to really everybody, and there are many, many helping hands uh, that have brought this Vaccination Center into being, including members of our fire and police bureaus, and if I heard it once, I heard it multiple times, that city staff are responsive, supportive, and collaborative, and this is really appreciated too, given that we are doing something that none of us have ever done in um, in our lifetimes. And so I encourage you to share uh, the information about the rent program as well as the vaccination um, ability to register uh, through your networks uh, as much as possible, thank you very much, if in advance, if you've already done so, and uh, please keep it up. That's my report for tonight, thank you, President. You're on mute.
That's probably for the better anyway, um, I do not have uh, a report this evening, council comments. All right, hearing none, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.